Good to go, Andrew.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, good evening, welcome to the March 24th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting for the city of Fayetteville. I'd like to remind everybody, please turn your cellphones to silent or off, and if anybody needs a listening device, please check with staff. Mr. Garner, could you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Here.
Chesser?
Here.
Pancho?
Here.
Cook? Winston?
Here.
Bunch?
Here.
Noble? Autry?
Here.
Okay, and this evening, we have a presentation that I'm gonna just let staff handle this. Mr. Garner?
Chief of Staff, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission. Wanted to, on behalf of the Mayor's Office, our citizens of Fayetteville, and our city staff, we'd like to thank one of your departing commissioners, Blake Pennington, for his time and efforts in the past two years of service here on the Planning Commission, and his previous years also on the Telecom Board for the city of Fayetteville. Blake recently accepted a position working as the Assistant City Attorney here at the city of Fayetteville, and is no longer able to serve on the Planning Commission by accepting this staff role. While we will miss his contributions here on the commission, we consider ourselves very fortunate to have him serving the citizens on a daily basis in our city attorney's office. Not only has Commissioner Pennington been involved in a number of city initiatives as a planning commissioner, his work in leadership with the Telecom Board has been much appreciated by city staff and our elected officials who appointed him to these two boards. Blake has always objectively and steadily reviewed the requests before him. Comments that we've heard from elected officials are they like his supportiveness of his peers on the commission, but not being afraid to speak out with a differing opinion. We appreciate the service to the city and citizens of Fayetteville, and we'd like to present him with a small token that reads an appreciation of your dedication and service to the city of Fayetteville. Blake Pennington, Planning Commissioner, April 2012 to December 2013.
I just wanna thank you, thank you to the city. Appreciate the time I got to spend with all of you on the commission. Look forward to working with you in the future in my new role. Thanks. Okay. We have two items on consent this evening. The first is the approval of the minutes from the March 10th, 2014 meeting, and the second is administrative item 14-4652, UDC Amendment to Chapter 156 Variances. Is there any member of the public here to speak to either of these items, or have them pulled for discussion? Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Winston, and a second from Commissioner Chesser. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Pancho?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and just for the public's, we're going a little out of order this evening. We're jumping around just a little bit, just to try to be considerate of people's time. So, we're gonna jump from old to new to old business, a little unorthodox, but like I said, just trying to be respectful of everybody in the audience. The first item of old business is a rezone 14-4618 for the southwest corner of Paddock Lane in Happy Hollow. Mr. Fulter, do you have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The council or the commission discussed this about a month ago. At the time, the applicant had requested rezon the whole property to RSF8, and wanted to take some time to go back and look at future use of this property. It was a PZD that is still in place and allows a combination of single-family and multifamily units on the property. It's very steep, though, fairly wooded, and so they really wanted to look at what they wanted to put on this site moving forward. Since that time, they've modified their request slightly. They are sticking with the majority of the property being rezoned to RSF8. They've added 3.25 acres to be rezoned to neighborhood conservation. Both of these are single-family zoning districts. The neighborhood conservation is a slightly smaller lot size of about 4,000 square feet versus the 5,000 square feet for the RSF8. We still think this is an appropriate request. We have kind of multifamily and duplex uses to one side of this property, and moving up the hill into the hillside, you're getting into single-family uses. So, we feel it's a good transition, it's a good use of the infrastructure that's already on the property that's fully installed, and appropriate land use and consistent with our future land use map. So, we are recommending that this be forwarded as proposed with the recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Is the applicant available? Bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Commissioner.
This is another one of these examples of our new zones being more useful and not needing planned zoning districts as much as we used to. And so, I think they've been able to stick with what the initial intent of this development was, and so I'm gonna move to approve rezone 14-4618 for Paddock.
Second. Okay, and your four determinations?
With favor. We have to recommend for approval. Recommend, oh, forward to the city council the recommendation for approval.
Okay. Have a motion from Commissioner Winston, and a second from Commissioner Autry. Mr. Garner, would you? Sir? Oh, okay. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Pancho?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the first item of new business is a rezone for the north of Alberta Street and west of the Coves. Let's see, Mr. Fulter, could you give us, or let's see, 14-4645, I apologize. Mr. Fulter, can you give us a staff report, please?
Sir, this is about 10 acres of property. It's actually zoned RPZD. This is the Coves out on Alberta. This is adjacent to Farmington City Limits. Walnut Crossing is a fairly large subdivision just to the east of this, has been developed over the last probably five to seven years. This is, was the same building group that took on this project. It was a larger overall development, had three phases total. Only one of those was actually final platted. They constructed the streets, and they've started building houses out there in the last probably 12 months. This portion of the development, they cut in the street. This was kind of their second point of access for fire department. They put in a water line, and they had plans to move forward with the second phase of development, but it expired. First is trying to reestablish the PZD zoning on this property. They looked at some more conventional zoning districts and felt that the RSF8 zoning district would meet their needs for the piece of property. Walnut Crossing and the Coves are fairly small lots. They're probably between 4,000 and 7,000 square feet, depending on where you are within the development. RSF8 allows 5,000 square feet, so it fits in with their lot size proposals and the densities that they've constructed out there already. They'll of course have to go back through the preliminary and final plat process that the Planning Commission will see, and kind of rework the infrastructure system to meet current requirements, but they felt, first step being to rezon this property to a zoning district allowed them to move forward to the development process. The RSF8, we feel, is appropriate at single-family on both sides of this development. RSF8 is a density that's comparable in either direction, be it Farmington to the west or the city available to the east. So, we feel this is a good fit and a good way to replace an expired development proposal for the original Coves, so we're recommending this be forwarded with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant available? Could please state your name and tell us about your project?
Yes, sure. My name is Daniel Ellis of Crafton Toll and Associates. I think Mr. Fulter did a very good job in explaining what our request is, and I'll answer any questions the Planning Commission has.
Okay, thank you, yeah. If we have any questions, we'll bring you back up. Is there any member of the public here to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, much like the other situation, this is pretty straightforward. So, I'm gonna move to forward to the city council with the recommendation for approval, rezone 14-4645 for the Coves.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Winston, and a second from Commissioner Bunch. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Pancho?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Garner, and it just occurred to me that I didn't allow for public comment on the first item of old business?
You can ask for it. There'll still be, there'll be a public hearing obviously for the city council also, but if you have any member of the public wants to speak to you on that item, you could ask for it.
Okay. Was there a member of the public to speak to Paddock Lane, Happy Hollow? Just for technical reasons. Thank you. Okay, and the, let's see, the second item of new business is a large-scale development for the southwest corner of Shiloh and Foxglove. Mr. Fulter, let's see, oops, 14-4640. Mr. Fulter, could you give us a staff report, please?
Sir, this is an older planned zoning district. We keep seeing these on this agenda, Spring Woods. It was approved around probably 2005. This was a very large piece of property, several hundred acres. They're along 112 and 540, on the west side of 540, and had a variety of different planning areas. There's some residential developments that have been constructed. Some portions of the areas along Trucker's Drive behind Sam's Club are also part of Spring Woods. This is a commercial portion, Foxglove Drive, they've gone ahead and built the sidewalks and streets in here, and have seen developments come through in the past. This would comprise four lots. They're proposing a auto dealership, would be a 30,000 square foot auto dealership with the repair services in the rear of the building, and the display area, and then parking for customers and for employees. That's approximately six acres. When this went to subdivision committee a few weeks ago, really the only issue was discussing the commercial design standards. Staff had some concerns with the east elevation that is visible to Shiloh Drive and to 540, and concerns that it wasn't well articulated, which is one of the requirements for our commercial design standards. They've kind of made changes as we've moved from tech plat to subdivision committee and on to planning commission. We feel at this point, with the revisions, they've added some windows this time to that elevation near the top of the building, have met that minimum requirement, so at this point, we are satisfied with the elevations that they proposed, and are recommending approval of that. We weren't supportive of it at subdivision committee, so that was really the main point of discussion for this project. I did want to make two points about tree preservation. I think my numbers that I copied into my staff report were off their mitigation requirements. Just to be clear, it's 67 trees in mitigation. The urban foresters recommended approval of this. They're gonna do 39 onsite mitigation trees, and 28 trees would go into tree escrow, and that'd be $18,900. That's over the entire six acres of property that they're going to develop. And then, one more curveball for the commissioners tonight. There was a, actually a variance for the shrub placement that I didn't recognize in the staff report. If you remember, when we looked at the Ventura Super a few years ago, with the shrub, the shrub requirement is that it's continuous along the property, and what they ended up doing on that property was they grouped them. They provided the same quantity of shrubs, but to increase the visibility into the display area, which is really the focus of this type of business, we recommended that they be allowed to group those shrubs. Crane Automotive has proposed the same thing. We support that. Again, we feel it's consistent with the previous recommendation, and given the nature of the business, it is important that they have a little bit higher visibility since their display is very low to the ground. So, we are recommending approval of slight variance of the landscape code to allow those shrubs to be grouped. If you look on page 18 in your staff report, you'll see their landscape plan. Very good landscape plan, in our opinion, but it just allows the shrubs to be grouped and allow some gaps in between there. And then, page 19, you'll see the most updated elevations that we're recommending approval for. A few other standard conditions of approval, but with that, we're recommending approval of the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant available? Could please state your name and tell us about your project?
Sure. Good evening, my name is Justin Jorgensen. I'm the civil and the project, and I'm here with Dan Chapel with Chapel Architecture that I'm sure he can answer any questions on the design. Just real quick, I know there's some talk at subdivision committee about the tree preservation. I've worked with Ken numerous times on this to get this resolved, and I think he's happy, we're happy, everyone's on the same page. So, other than that, we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, yeah, if we have anything, we'll bring you back up. Thank you. Is there any member of the public here to speak to this item? Okay, okay. If you could, please state your name.
Aubrey Shepherd. Well, I just witnessed developers' smoke rising this afternoon up on a metal ship at Eastern Avenue. I didn't know anything to improve there, but years ago, they went in on that site and cut a big wide swath into it.
Is this pertaining to this development?
Yes, it's the reason I'm speaking about this one. I hope if they are taking out big trees from this site, that they won't burn them there. They'll make them available for lumber, and there are people who still buy lumber and make wood for houses and so forth. And in the past, we've seen instances where they rush to burn it. They say they've got to do it because they've got to get the project done, and then the project goes dead, and the trees are gone, and it's all up in smoke. So, this is, this is an instance where there may be some trees that would be preserved if our ordinance were strong, the way we imagined it might be way back in the day when it was first put in the forest. But also, with the shrubbery that's being required, I hope that there's some attempt to use native plants, because this is very near the property that's, we called it the Audubon property, and anyway, it's the nature area out there, and there are lots of native things growing. Every time the lot's cleared in that area, they're taken out. So, if some of those could be utilized in landscaping instead of just destroying them, it would be a great benefit to the bees, and the butterflies, and the birds, and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to this item? Okay, if you know one, I'll bring it back to the commission, commissioners.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Winston.
Question for Jesse. It looks like the west elevation is sort of less articulated than the east elevation, was there concerns with that?
No, it's not gonna be really visible, so we're really trying to play the strictest interpretation of the ordinance to the street-side elevations. Even to the south, we asked them to add some materials, which they did, and that's not even directly adjacent to a street, but it would be visible coming northbound on Shiloh. So, if it's visible, we do ask them to try to articulate it, but the west side of the building really won't be visible from the public viewpoint. So, we felt comfortable with the design on that side.
Okay. And then, to Mr. Shepherd's points, do we have any ordinances requiring trees to not be burned on sites, or?
No.
What has to do with burning trees in the area?
I think those comments are probably not applicable. I mean, they're certainly, we understand the comments, but they, there's not any requirements I think that can be applied to this large scale regarding disposal of the trees.
I think that's correct, and speaking to someone that lost a couple walnut trees, and so wanted to get them milled, it is sometimes difficult to get mills to take trees that are close into a city because they're too afraid somebody's putting nails and stuff in them. I finally found somebody in Winslow to do it, but it's not a common thing to be able to take a tree that's been growing in the city and just have it milled, because it's too dangerous. One of those saws, at full speed, hits a nail or something, it can just explode. And so, a lot of times, those are difficult. Even though I do agree, I like the trees, and it's always a shame when we lose anything like that.
Okay. And then, for landscape, Ken, was there any native plants being used in this?
Yes, there are a few.
You need to come up to the microphone.
There's a variety. Some are native. I can't recall the whole list. There's no requirement that we do have to use native shrubs, but we try to promote that as much as we can. Definitely a good idea.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner.
I'll move to approve large-scale development 14-4640. I have to get back here to the, there's finding in favor of the determination of commercial design standards.
Second, and Mr. Chair, I was gonna make a couple of comments if possible.
Okay.
Commissioner Hoskins and Cook and I were on this subdivision committee, and we all had comments on the, is it the east? Is that the direction? Jesse was at the east side that they made changes to. And I feel like they've, you know, made a definite effort to articulate that more. It looks less blank to me, so I'm fairly happy with how it is now. And I guess I just wanted to say that I feel like they've sort of made an attempt to meet the commercial design standards. It definitely looks better than it did to begin with. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair? There was also the variance for the, allow the shrubs to be grouped, if the motioner could.
Add to my, I didn't find that on there, but finding in favor of a variance to allow the shrubs to be grouped rather than as our ordinance normally dictates.
And I'll still second.
Okay. Have a motion from Commissioner Winston, and a second from Commissioner Chesser. Mr. Garner, could you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Pancho?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item of new business is administrative item 14-4648 for Forest Hills PZD. Now, let's see, Mr. Fulter, could you give us staff, staff report, please?
Sir, Forest Hills Development, the commission's seen a number of projects come through in the last probably two years, and have become more familiar with this. This was an overall 80-acre tract that was rezoned by the Planning Commission City Council back in 2006. There was five distinct planning areas for various uses. Funding Area 1 was primarily commercial uses. That's where the neighborhood market's located at. That's where First Security Bank that came through recently was approved. There was also a medical office that was recently in Planning Area 1. There's several outlots still left along Wedding to Drive, which our next item for Freddie's is proposing development on, and so this is kind of tied into the Forest Hills amendment as well. One of the things we've talked about on all the most recent projects is the required design standards, not the city's commercial design standards, but what the developer put in place for the Forest Hills development. And if you remember, we've been talking about the colors that were supposed to be based on kind of the Walmart design, the Walgreens design, and that's kind of coming into question every time, because no one matches that quite exactly. And when we spoke with the applicants for Freddie's, we all realized we're gonna come right back to that discussion as well. They really didn't match the colors that we talked about with the Walmart project, and that's not really something we've, requiring our ordinance, there's really not a color requirement. We really look at articulation and building design, and a little bit about materials. And so, we talked to them about maybe just amending Planning Area 1 altogether, and I think that's a comment we've had with the development teams over the last two years about maybe just, let's fix this once and for all in Planning Area 1, and not make it so specific to one particular development. And so, they proposed some language, and the only concern we had was that it was a little too vague for us, and we just wanted something that was, really just talked about the quality of materials, didn't talk about color palettes or anything like that. So, that's what we've proposed in our language, which would be a modification to the project booklet language for Forest Hills, Planning Area 1. You know, simply state, all structures will be street scale, one to two stories, that's original language. The new language would be the primary building materials for facilities. They'll be brickstone, concrete panels, or textured concrete blocks, so some type of masonry materials, being the primary material. So, you can still use ephesus and other types of things as a supplementary material, but the primary material will be a masonry unit. And if you look at all the developments that have come through in Planning Area 1, they all would have met this requirement. When we looked at the Freddie's and consulted with their team last week, they felt that they met this requirement as well. So, we feel like this puts in place a good standard for a commercial district without burdening, burdening future developments with color requirements, has been the requirement so far. So, that's our recommendation, is really just to stick to the quality of the materials and allow the individual development to go with their types of supplementary materials or color palettes as they see fit. And that's condition number one. The other ones are just really kind of standard conditions for a modification to a PZD. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant available? If you could, please state your name.
Yes, sir. Brian Niebel with GHA Architecture. I'm representing Freddie's, and they're here tonight as well to answer any questions you may have about the proposed change to the modificat, propose, excuse me, proposed change to the design guidelines.
Okay, and I'm sure we'll bring you right back up.
I have one question. Are you satisfied with the language that the planning department has come up with?
We are. I think we easily fit the criteria of not having, I know the ephesus was a question as whether or not that was the primary material. We actually ran some calculations after talking to Mr. Fulter and confirmed that it's not. I think our bigger concern was just the color of the canopies. We wanted to make sure that that wasn't gonna be a problem down the road, that these are red and white are so different from, say, the green that's on the Walmart right now.
Okay. Yeah, we'll bring you back up if we have any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any member of the public here to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Chesser.
Just to clarify, right now, we're not, we're only discussing?
Correct. I kinda, I meant to have these two read together. That was my mistake.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I hadn't blanked and missed something. Given that, I feel like what planning staff has come up with works fine. I definitely don't want to be dictating color palettes to people, and I'm gonna move that we approve administrative item 14-4648 with staff conditions of approval.
Second.
I'm sorry, forward to the city council with the recommendation for approval.
Okay. Have a motion from Commissioner Chesser, and a second from Commissioner Autry. Mr. Garner, could you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Pancho?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Now, the next one is the conditional use for Forest Hills Freddie's Frozen Custard, 14-4649. Mr. Fulter, could you give us a staff report, please?
Sir, so this is kind of the second phase of this overall project. We met with the applicants on the front end, kind of identified the major issues, the design standards. They were looking for some additional parking, and so we explained the conditional use process to the Planning Commission for that, and then, of course, there'd be future development phases, hopefully, and they really wanted to break these into individual pieces moving forward. So, on the conditional use portion, this is specifically for the piece of property that Freddie's Frozen Custard is looking at developing. It's 1.35 acres. This is the lot right at the intersection of Salem and Weddington, in the Planning Area 1 on the southwest corner of the property. The parking code for the UDC provides a parking ratio for restaurants of one per 100 square feet, one parking space per 100 square feet of restaurant. So, we ran the calculation based on the deck area and the overall restaurant size, and that gives us a baseline. This is the number of parking spaces you can have by right. And then, within the code, you can add additional parking spaces. I think it's a 15% by right you can bump up, then additional 10% you can add if you do stormwater treatment techniques, and then an additional 5% parking increase for additional trees. And so, we ran that calculation. They're allowed to do 52 parking spaces by right, doesn't require anyone else's approval other than meeting the standard development requirements. Their request is for 64 spaces total, so 12 more than allowed by the code. And historically, and I think some of the planning commissioners may remember some projects in the past, we've supported additional parking, particularly for restaurants that we've supported additional parking, particularly for restaurants that really have high peak demand parking requirements. And that's kind of throughout the day, it's really not a few times per year, but it's several times per day, depending on the type of restaurant that it is. I think out in CMN Business Park, about every restaurant out there has conditional use for additional parking. And so, I think historically, we've been very supportive of those types of things when an applicant can show that there's a need and they know their need better than we do. And so, we respect that and do want to give them some flexibility in their parking requirements. But what we have to look at is those other requirements such as green space, tree preservation, and make sure that we're meeting kind of the more green side, the environmental side, the preservation side of a particular, particular piece of property. In this case, there's two trees on the site and they're very large trees. So it's a thirty-one inch and a thirty-four inch diameter post oaks based on a tree preservation analysis. It was done on a previous project that never came through, so we actually have this information in our office. So we understood kind of the health of the trees, I think one's in fair condition, one's in good condition. They're both towards the north portion of the site and one's at the northeast corner of the property. They have, of course, haven't developed full civil plans for the site, but based on the conceptual site plan that we've included, they're not really able to preserve these trees. One is shown as to be removed, one's shown to be preserved. But when you look at where the parking is and the drive-through, the curbing, the grading work would have to take place, we would never consider that tree preserved and it's very unlikely that it would survive even if they could keep it in place during construction. And so, when we look at it, we see zero percent preservation. And of course, we're not looking at the development, but we all realize we're looking forward. If there's more parking than is allowed by code, then there's a higher chance that these trees can't be preserved once they do get to the civil and design process. And so, it's kind of hard to juggle those two things. Maybe they could redesign the whole project and get sixty-two parking spaces. I don't know if they can do that or not. What we're looking at is, should we recommend approval of additional parking, knowing that based on that design, they can't preserve either of the two trees or both significant trees based on our criteria? We don't see a way to support that type of request. We're happy to support additional parking on this project and would give them the flexibility of, you know, between, above fifty-two. But our expectation is to see a tree preservation plan that incorporates preservation of these trees, at least with a recommendation by our urban forester. And of course, the final determination comes back to the Planning Commission as a large-scale development. So their design, whether it be with fifty-two parking spaces or sixty-two parking spaces or whatever it might be, eventually has to come back through as a large-scale development and they still have to meet the tree preservation requirements or at least get a recommendation of support from the Planning Commission. So it may leave them a little bit in limbo at this point, but we can't support the request, knowing that the two trees are gonna be removed. So we have to recommend denial of this request. Again, we've entertained some flexibility for them moving forward to their large-scale development. But what we're looking for is maybe some direction from the Planning Commission. You could deny the entire request, you could give them some flexibility, some flexibility with direction of an expectation of what's gonna be preserved on the property. Our recommendation at this point is, we can't support additional parking if both trees are removed.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant available? Could you please state your name?
Good evening, my name is Jamie Ream, I'm with Three Point Restaurant Group. I'm actually the owner and franchisee of Freddie's Frozen Custard in Missouri, Arkansas, and California. We're happy to be here tonight, we're happy to grow our family-oriented concept to Arkansas. We actually just opened our first Arkansas location last Monday in Rogers. It's been going over really well. You know, to give a quick little background on our concept, just because we have a drive-through window doesn't mean we do most of our business through the drive-through. We actually do seventy percent of our business inside our store, dine-in. That means we have, to have a lot of parking that goes along with our concept. And we are not a, a concept that, you know, just does a little bit for lunch, a little bit for dinner. Our, our data, we own and operate nearby in Springfield and Branson. And our Springfield unit does over two point five million a year, you know, with those kind of sales. There's a lot of, a lot of hamburgers, french fries, hot dogs, and custard going out the window with that. Seventy percent of that is coming through those doors. It's a lot of cars on the lot. And, you know, at this particular location, we don't have a lot of cross-access parking. You know, one thing we always look for is safety, that's a big concern of ours, safety of our guests getting in to our lot, but also getting into our store. And we have been working on this conceptual design for six months now. And we have reworked the site plan numerous times to both try and accommodate the request from the, from the city planners, but also, you know, it has to be a win-win for us, too. There's one significant challenge on this site that Walmart has instilled, and that is a no-build zone. As you can see, there is a dotted line going across the middle of our lot right there. We cannot build inside that dotted line. That does not give us a whole lot to work with, with locating our building plus drive-through. That is, you know, we have tried to accommodate a lot of requests. One is the additional setback that was brought our way a couple of months ago on the east side. We then went and purchased additional property on the west line, went through a property line adjustment to move the west lot line twelve feet. And when we did so, it opened up the western tree. That western tree still sits on top of our awning, still sits on top of our sidewalk. And as you can see, it's right there in the handicap parking. The eastern tree, we were able to move that drive-through lane, the encroachment, out of that a little bit, but it's still depicted in this site plan, it still is underneath that tree canopy. Well, we were first told that before we went and bought more land and accommodated the request of a bigger setback, that we could mitigate the western tree and do our best to work around that eastern tree. Well, when we went and worked with the city and bought more land, you know, the, the western tree now, you know, it came out a little bit, but still, as you can see, in order to go underneath the same guidelines as what we're being requested to do on the eastern tree, we'd still have to move our building, we'd still have to move our sidewalk. And the last thing that we'd never want to do is move that handicap parking. The reason why we don't want to move that handicap parking to where it's suggested, I got an uncle that's handicapped. I go with him many places. This is a high-volume store. I don't want to have to bring my uncle through a drive aisle with a lot of cars going north to south, southeast to get to that drive-through lane. Right now, where we have that position, it's right by the sidewalk, it's right by our entrance, and it's right by our patio seating. We have access sidewalk there just for that reason, to accommodate our handicap parking, to accommodate those special needs. And I think that's very important. I would never want to go through this, putting that handicap parking that far away. You know, with, with that, you know, we try to work through as many obstacles as we can. We want to be in Fayetteville, we're coming to Springdale, we're coming to Fort Smith, we want to be here, we think this is a great fit. You know, unfortunately, there's a few items here that, it's not a, it's not a one, two, three to get through, but we've really, we've invested in the community so far. We're looking forward to getting in Fayetteville. And, you know, really, in general, on this site plan, we're, we're trying to do the best we can to save, whatever we can save with the trees. I know that western one, we're, we're not gonna be able to save. We love to, to landscape our properties, we love to spend, you know, money making our, making our buildings look good. You know, the picture up here wasn't a picture of what we're just doing here, we do that everywhere in our group. We, we use brick, stone, we dress our buildings, we, we want the back of our buildings just to look as good as the front of our buildings. And we, we think that adds a lot of value to the community. We, we also, just in Rogers, we hired ninety individuals, employees. And, you know, the amount of tax revenue that we generate off of two point five million dollars is, is quite a bit. We like to get involved in the communities, in the schools, we're family-oriented, and, you know, we truly look forward to being here. You know, in Springfield, we have seventy-three spaces. Here, we're suggesting, you know, sixty-four. And I, I don't mind, we try to work this, safety again is, is, is the key element. You know, I don't, I don't want to put anybody in danger. And, you know, with this site plan, trying to, trying to work around these trees, it's, you know, safety's a concern. And the setback doesn't allow us to be able to position our building, to, to be able to preserve these trees. And, you know, I think anybody coming here to this site, if, if we don't end up being able to have the opportunity to come here, they're gonna face the same problems, they're gonna face the setback. That setback, the no-build area is never gonna go away, that no-build area will be there. So, you know, with that, I'd love to answer any questions, I'd love to, you know, be able to make this work on both ends. We try to be as flexible as we can to make our concept work. But again, you know, maybe if we were doing a million dollars in sales a year, we could reposition ourselves differently. But with the high volumes that, that we're doing and the year-over-year comp growth we're seeing, we don't only prepare for today, we prepare for tomorrow, too, just like you guys do.
Okay, thank you, if we have any questions, we'll bring you back up.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any member of the public here to speak to this item? Could you please state your name?
Albert Shepherd, again. One of my best memories from last summer was being in Ryan, New York and going to one of the famous, can't remember the name of it, but it's just famous, been there for many, many years. And they've got seating outdoors under the shade of a big old tree, some beautiful flowers growing around it. And all the kids were playing under there and, you know, that's the kind of thing you incorporate into your design somehow and utilize it. Because it's a lot more fun to be out in the shade than indoors on a lot of summer days, spring and fall days. This winter, I wouldn't want to be out there. Anyway, I, I think it would be worth their while to make the place popular by, by using more of what's already there. That tree is, or those two trees, probably be worthwhile.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bunch?
Yes, I have a question for staff, I forgot to write this down. What did you say the condition of the trees, those, those two large trees were?
Double check, I believe I included that sheet. The thirty-one inch post, which is the, the western one, the one above the ADA spaces, right there, according to project plans that were submitted to us, I think last year for a project on the site that didn't go through, they noted it as an existing post oak, thirty-one inch diameter, fair to poor condition. Still, this is a significant tree because of its size. The eastern tree, the one that has a higher likelihood of being preserved, is a thirty-four inch and it's in good condition.
Is it in our notes, what is, what is the rating like for those, I mean, like, do you have excellent or super job or something like that?
Our urban forester's here, Ken, could you come to the podium and answer the question on our rating system? If you could, please state your name for us.
Ken Easton, urban forester. Basically, if, if it is a native species, if it is a significant tree, then it's a high priority for preservation. And, which would be the case with both of these. Now, with the one being in, in good condition, that's definitely a consideration. We usually do try to take the condition of the trees into consideration as well. I did not do the review on this site, so I'm not really prepared to speak to it, but I am familiar with it somewhat and I, I can answer any questions.
Would a good, would, like, an average condition, or is there an excellent condition, or is good, like, the top of the line there?
Well, good or excellent, they're, they're both top of the line. Many times, an arborist will evaluate a tree from the ground just by sight only. And usually, they'll be reluctant to go excellent condition without more of a detailed look at the tree.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Albert. Albert, you done?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm done.
I believe Commissioner Hoskins had a comment.
I just had a couple of questions, actually, Mr. Bunch answered, or asked and answered one of them that, that I was curious about as well. On the tree to the west, other than removing pretty much any infrastructure they would put in there, the likelihood of that tree surviving construction of this site, especially as long as it's been there and being in poor health, it may be there a year after, after they're done constructing on this site. And even that close to that building, I'm, I would have my doubts whether it would survive throughout all this construction. Especially, I mean, that, that area out there's not, really had a whole lot of equipment on it or anything like that. I don't, I don't see it surviving regardless of whether we try to preserve it or not. And I also note that, you know, they're not accessing Weddington Drive or even Salem Road. So they, they're accessing Forest Hills, which I guess is probably a big plus to the city or whatever. I think there's some restrictions of their access to Salem, but, but anyhow, but we don't have, at least we're not arguing that battle about ride-in, ride-out, and full-service curb and all that. So in other words, my point is, is that it looks to me, especially with going and buying another twelve feet of property just to try to, to accommodate the city, it sounds to me like they've really done their due diligence in the last six months and tried to make this thing work. While I would, you know, support, you know, making a gallant effort to save that tree to the east, to me, the one to the west, if you develop the site at all, it's a goner. And it might, might be a goner today, but it'll probably be a goner tomorrow. And I'd like to hear your thoughts on that, your opinion on that, Ken.
Well, I, I can't disagree with you.
Okay.
In a situation like that, a mature tree, unless you just give it all the, the space to breathe and to preserve those roots, then it's, it's unlikely to survive the construction.
All the construction traffic and everything, yeah.
On the other hand, I, I think the one on the east side is definitely worthy of preservation.
Right.
But as the plan currently looks, it, it does have too much disturbance under the, the canopy there. So in order to, to ensure or at least help that make it through the development, it would need a little bit more space beneath.
How much more space do you reckon?
At least out to the drip line.
Are we talking the drip line, are we talking about moving that, that curb then, on the west side of the tree, moving it further west? Or are you talking about the curb to the south?
That's really the, the issue, because the installation of that curb and the excavation necessary for the, for the parking lot and so forth is, is gonna impact those critical roots. And typically, you know, the, the feeder roots are in about the first twelve or eighteen inches of soil. Most, all of the roots, other than structural roots, are in the first three feet of soil. So you can do some excavation and not get into all of the roots, but you're gonna get into a lot of those feeder roots.
Would this be one of those cases where maybe root pruning would be?
Yeah, definitely, that would, that would really be necessary, even, even at the edge of the drip line. And then, you start encroaching into that drip line, it becomes more and more critical.
Okay. So, in your opinion, if they went in there and did some strategic root pruning of that tree, do you think that maybe the location of the curb may not have to be adjusted out quite so much to the west?
No, I would not feel comfortable saying that. It's, it's really encroaching too much into that critical root zone now. I, I think it really does need a little bit more space to preserve that tree.
Thank you very much, Ken. The applicant, where'd he go? Here we go. I appreciate your work on this in the last six months, that's, that's a long time to be doing anything. But on that, I agree with you on your handicap parking or whatever. Can you tell me where at this building, the, the entrance to this building is on the side of the building? Like, middle, middle of the wall to the north or to the south?
Yeah, if you look right where the Freddie's logo is on the overlay there of the building, there's basically just to the, the east there with the double doors up, right, go down just a little bit, right there.
So about, okay, about midway in the building, okay, there.
There, I see it now.
It's hard for me to see on my iPad. I agree with you about the handicap spots being moved and having a cross- I agree with you about the handicap spots being moved and having cross traffic. I've always thought that was kind of a strange thing every time I go to Sam's or Walmart. You know, they put all those handicap spaces up front, then they got to cross all that traffic. And so, anyway, so I agree with you in the space that you, where you put the handicap. And I guess my question to you is, do you think that some adjustment can be made in that curb to the west side of the east tree? Do you think some adjustment can be made in that to move that curb west to try to save that tree?
Yeah, I do think we can make some adjustment. One thing, you know, we got to be careful about is the drive aisle. As you go down a little bit south from that tree and you encounter the parking stalls on both sides, when we, the farther west we go, and I don't mind taking out a couple, you know, the parking stalls right next to the handicap, that's not the issue. What the issue is, is when that drive-through lane stacks, being able, traffic flow is important to us, and if we were to move that curb farther west, that traffic is then, is going to be diverted towards that middle island of stalls versus right now, how it kind of keys in right down the drive aisle. I don't, you know, we can try and get that curb on that east side there, the drive-through lane, and we can try and get that over a few feet. Do I think, one, that it's going to get out of the canopy to still be successful with meeting the current codes of how we have to have our parking and drive aisles? Maybe. Secondly, one thing I've noticed as I walked the property before I came here today, is I noticed that the diameter of the tree canopy, as drawn on this, is, the radius is the same on both sides, and that is not the case on site. The case on site is the eastern part of the trunk, the tree canopy is larger than the western side. And there is a sewer inlet right here towards the front, that if you look at where that is depicted on the site plan and where the canopy is drawn, they really don't line up. I think there's close to seven to 10 feet of difference in where the actual canopy is on the plan is and where it is in reality. You know, and that's one thing that I was looking at before I came here, that in reality, if we really, you know, look at that tree canopy, and I know that the canopies and the drawings were taken from a previous study, I don't know if, you know, it could shrink on one side in a year or not, but to me, it appeared that, you know, it is, the canopy is a little smaller on the west side than the east side, and therefore, the radius should not be drawn the same. Just an opinion as I was out there, because I truly do want to try and save the tree, and I truly do want to, you know, make our access to the drive-through and the parking lot as, you know, as safe as we can, but also accommodate whatever we need to accommodate.
Yeah. I have a question. Don't move. A question for staff. Just out of curiosity, this particular tree on the east side, is it, it's not located within any easements or anything currently, is it?
Not that I'm aware of, but I honestly don't know. Kind of same thing with the canopy. All this is preliminary drawings, you know, we haven't gone through civil plans. So, yeah, he could be correct about the canopy. He could be, you know, 14 feet shorter on the west side, and it may not be reflected correctly on the site plan. We just don't know that.
Well, that's going to be, okay, that makes it a little tough.
Can I say one thing to that comment? One thing is, is, you know, we've extended our due diligence, paid a lot of money the last three months on this project to kind of get to this point. We haven't closed on the project. We have a lot of money invested in the project currently, and, you know, I've held off on developing civil plans. I've held off on spending another $75,000 on architectural plans until, you know, we kind of get through a couple of the main points. And one was, you know, the design guideline. But the second is, are these trees, you know, I'm not going to go invest a million dollars in this property yesterday if I don't know for sure, you know, if we can even make it work. So, that's one reason, you know, I think that we try to be as accurate as we can. We spent a lot of money trying to get to this point to, you know, get as much information as we can out there. And it's great that there's already been some development done on this property to where, you know, we have some of these existing studies, and we just want to make it work.
Okay. I guess my opinion is that, like I was discussing before, the tree to the west, I believe even if they tried to preserve such a tree in the health that it's in or whatever, I don't, I don't think it'll last beyond the first year anyway, even if they do preserve it. And I would support that tree being removed and mitigated, assuming that they can try to preserve that tree to the east. And I believe that they can accomplish that by losing one parking spot at the east end of the handicap aisle and moving the curb to the east side, or to the west side of the east tree, moving it further west by an equal amount. I think they'd have it pretty close. I think it's something that an engineer could easily do and get your turning radiuses that you need and all that. That's why they put steering wheels on cars. But anyway, so actually, I would support that, if that's something that you think you can do. And then, as far as, I really think that was kind of the only issue, wasn't it, those two trees?
That's the way I interpret it.
Yes. We're just looking for, I mean, again, if, based on just what you're saying, you'd be supportive of the conditional use as long as they preserve the eastern tree?
Pretty much, pretty much. And I would be, I would be curious, seeing your pictures up there, what have you, I'd be, I'd be curious if that tree was already within an easement. In fact, looking at the pictures, I'd be surprised if it wasn't. And so, I think preserving that tree, especially if it's in the easement, as he said earlier, I think that's a win-win. So, you know what I mean? Because, I mean, I think, anyway.
So, you would be proposing conditional use, but with the condition that the eastern tree, the younger, stronger tree?
More macho.
Could be preserved, and that the conditional use would be to allow enough parking spaces to do that, but not more, so you might have to give up a space there on the end of the handicap parking to do that. And you'd have to work with our tree urban forester here to make sure that you satisfy him that what you've done is satisfactory to the urban forester and thinks that the tree can survive. Is that what you're talking about?
That's perfect.
And so, you understand what is being proposed right now?
Yes. So, you feel confident that you can do that, then?
Yeah, I feel pretty confident. We, it might take, you know, a stall, stall and a half, but, you know, with some real data, too, on the canopy, you know, I think that there's room to make it happen, because I don't think that, if we just need to stay out of the drip line, the drip line being the canopy, correct, coming straight down to the ground, I think that, you know, we can obtain that in reality without having to adjust that curb 15, 20 feet. I think we can do it by a width of a stall or maybe a couple more feet than the width of the stall.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. I'm going to jump in here just real quick, just to ask Commissioner Hoskins. Now, you're not recommending, are we removing?
The west tree.
No, 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 no. The parking stall. Is it a?
That's going to be between staff and?
Okay. I just want to, I want to make sure that whatever we're recommending, we're still meeting ADA requirements.
It's very likely that the amount of spaces they're asking for, they're not going to get. It'll have to be one or two less.
Yeah, it'll be what they're asking for, or less what it takes to preserve that tree.
Okay, but we're still meeting ADA and all that stuff. Okay. And I believe Commissioner Winston?
Does not affect the handicap spaces at all.
Okay, that's, I just want a clarification.
Yeah, I just had a quick comment. From a conversation I had with our previous urban forester, I was asking her about why two-inch caliper trees, why not, you know, baby trees or bigger trees. And the idea was that very small trees will have a greater likelihood of survival and growing up. Developers want to put in bigger trees so everything looks done right away. It's kind of a, you know, that kind of thing. And so, I just want to suggest that our priorities for younger trees might want to have a sort of greater weight than for very, very mature trees. Even though, you know, we walk around and you say, whoa, that's an amazing tree, you know, it's been there a really long time and stuff. And it has this emotional connection that we have between, you know, us and old trees. But I think that putting a greater priority on middle-aged trees, I think, is more valuable at long-term health of the city. And I was having the same thoughts as Commissioner Hoskins on, you know, being able to just shift it and also, you know, get out there on the ground and put some flags in there and look at the drip line and kind of lay it out on the ground. It seems like, you know, you might be able to do it without, with only taking out one space. It looks like a great project to me. I'm definitely in support of it. And I think that, you know, you can preserve that tree, and so, I'm going to support the motion as it will be, as soon as somebody makes it.
I think he did.
Was there any, did we want to talk about any more, or should I make a formal?
Well, I believe Commissioner Chesser.
Yeah, I have a question for the urban forester.
Sir?
So, actually, I have a couple of questions for you. First of all, talk to me about what a fair-conditioned tree means.
Well, fair-conditioned, it's got some dead wood. Perhaps it shows some evidence from damage from the last ice storm or the last couple of ice storms. You may see a little bit of insect impact to it, but for the most part, it still appears healthy, still appears thriving.
So, I was a little confused earlier on the discussion that you agreed with, that there's no way to save this tree on this site. So, you're saying even with preservation fencing out past the drip line, you expect that the tree would?
Well, let me qualify that. When I say that there's no way that it would survive the development, I'm not talking about the site. I'm just talking about the activity of construction.
Sure.
It would have to be preserved at least a good ways beyond the drip line. I mean, we're using the drip line for a qualifier, but it's usually much best on the tree if it's a little farther away. The drip line is not the only qualifier. The ordinance says that the preservation has to be at least 10 feet or beyond the drip line, whichever is farthest.
Okay.
But in reality, the level of activity that's occurring on the site, the compaction, the material storage, you know, everything that's going on, if that tree were totally protected through every bit of that, it would have a pretty good chance. But unfortunately, in reality, sometimes the tree is impacted for some reason or another during construction, even with that fencing in place. The fencing doesn't always stay up. Sometimes it's down, you know.
Well, I guess that's the point of my question. Assuming that the fencing were put up in the right place and the letter of the law were observed, it's possible for the tree to remain on site.
It is. And there's other measures that can be taken to help protect it.
Then my next question, which I think you kind of answered already, is there's been a lot of discussion about the literal drip line, but my understanding is that the drip line and the root structure being similar in size is just a rule of thumb. It's not necessarily that they're identical, identically in the same place. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea that simply because the canopy doesn't extend as far to the west, that we don't have to extend the tree fencing to the same diameter of circle that's shown on the plan. I think those diameters are generally drawn as a diameter outside of what is considered to be the center line of the tree. Is that correct? Is that how those are come up with?
In some cases, yes. Excuse me. Typically, when we're reviewing canopy, when we're determining square footage of canopy, we need that literal drip line. And we encourage consultants, when they're preparing these tree surveys, to actually go out there and measure. If the canopy doesn't extend as far out on one side as it does on the other side, show us that on the plan, because that is the actual canopy that's being mitigated against. But in terms, your question has to deal with the roots and the support system of the tree. And in reality, those roots can extend three times beyond the canopy drip line and even farther beyond. So, we are only using that drip line as a touchstone, as a method to be able to accommodate some preservation attempts. And in some cases, it's successful. In other cases, you don't know if it's successful or not, because particularly oak trees, they decline so slowly that it may already be impacted and on its way out, and we don't know it. So, extraordinary measures for protection of that tree, you know.
May or may not be.
May or may not be effective.
Okay. But it does qualify, both trees would be recommended for preservation?
They are qualified in our code as significant trees.
Okay. I guess my other comment was, while I'm generally in favor of the project, I have no problem with it, I would like to see the trees preserved. I guess I kind of feel like, and the developer, or, sorry, the owner himself commented, that one of the real problems here is not caused by the city at all, but it's caused by, I guess, Walmart's view shed, I assume is what that dash line represents. And while I have a great deal of sympathy for the owner, having to deal with that problem, I'm not totally sure that the city becomes the owner of the problem because of a requirement put upon this parcel by a private owner. So, I'm less ready to agree to remove the tree to the west and not at all ready to consider impact of the tree to the east. So, I guess, I was a little surprised that it seemed to have been decided already that it was okay to lose the tree to the west and, you know, not be as careful as I kind of think we should be with the tree to the east. Because I guess I just don't understand why problems caused by one private party to another become sort of the problem of the city at this point. That's what it seems like is happening to me. I think this site could be developed with fewer parking spaces and could certainly be developed easily in a different manner if there weren't a problem, and again, I sympathize, a problem for the current owner caused by the previous owner of this lot. So, I guess, I can't support it in its current or proposed form, and I just wanted to air those comments. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hoskins.
Question for staff. Staff, with this project and, of course, around town, we're pushing for moving the buildings up to the street and avoiding parking in front of the buildings as a general preference, right?
Well, the zoning district's determined where you can put the building. We have policies in our city plan document.
And that's what I meant.
Yeah, those are policies, but the zoning sets where the building goes on the property.
Okay. And in this zoning, it's our PZD, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have that in this zoning, or is it merely a policy where this is concerned?
Yeah, there's not a requirement in the PZD regulations that require the building to be in this location.
Okay, great. But as a policy in the city, we like to see those buildings moved up to the street without parking in front of them or what have you. On this lot, the only place that building can go, if we're willing to put it up on the street, the only place that building can go is where it is. Move it to the left, the tree's done. Move it, or move it to the right, the tree's gone. Move it further to the right, both of them are gone. And so, my opinion is, is they've done a good job, and we ought to support it.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
I would just question whether or not Commissioner Hoskins considers Salem Road or Black Forest Drive streets, I guess, then?
Sure. I do.
So, it could have been placed on either of those streets and met the policy you're talking about, right?
Yeah, you put it on Salem Road, and it's gone, the trees, both trees are gone.
Really? The southeast corner?
Yeah, you could put it there.
Okay. That's all. Thank you. Thank you.
Where'd you put the curb code then? Where'd you put the curb check?
We're not here to, to design the project. I mean, this is what's in front of us. I, the southeast corner, just for the sake of saying, would be, would lie directly in the no-build zone. So.
That's imposed by Walmart, not the city.
Okay.
Share all the kind of motions.
But anyway, I, I'm, I'm going to state my position on this, just, just for a matter of record. I'm, I'm in line with Commissioner Winston and Commissioner Hoskins. That's, I, I really don't see any other way, no matter who's proposing a, any kind of concept on this lot, I, I don't see anything other than just a smaller building altogether. And my guess is that the owner, the proposed developer, he knows a whole lot more about what he needs rather than what I do to make it viable. So, with that being said, I understand the conflict on, on both sides, saving the trees and, and removing A1 tree to make the development work. And it seems to me that the development as proposed, the developer has done their job. I mean, they, they, seems that they've worked hard to get to this point, and I really don't want to restrict anything any further. So, with that being said, I believe Commissioner Hoskins, you had a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve conditional use 14-4649, provided that the western tree may be removed. However, the eastern tree shall be preserved, and they'll need to work with the Urban Forester to make that happen.
I'll second that.
Have a motion from Commissioner Hoskins and a second from Commissioner Chesser.
Oh, that was.
Or, Commissioner Winston, I'd certainly apologize.
It was your Chesser's thing.
Okay. Mr. Garner, could you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
No.
Montal?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunt?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And now back to old business. The second item of old business is a large-scale development 13-4568 for the northwest corner of Mount Comfort Road and Shiloh Drive, Come and Go. Mr. Pulcher, could you give us a staff report, please?
Sure. The large-scale development for this project was tabled back on January 13th. You approved the conditional use for an additional parking space on this property. We all know the issue that we discussed for quite a while at that meeting was, was the access being proposed by the applicant, the access management requirements, policies, Mount Comfort Road, traffic movements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They were given quite a bit of feedback from the commission, and one of the ideas that was generated was looking at the extension of a turn lane, I think was brought up by one of the commissioners, as a potential solution to allow greater access out on Mount Comfort Road than staff, than what staff was proposing at the time. Their original proposal was for full access on Mount Comfort Road without any improvements. Worst concern was, there's no turn lane out there, people going eastbound back into town from Mount Comfort that wanted to turn into the site, turn left into the site would stop any, through traffic, create significant problems in the AM peak hours where you have people trying to use that inside lane to get onto 540 North, rear collisions, left-turning movements being dangerous altogether, and then left-turning movements being dangerous as well. Left-turning movements into and out of driveways are the two highest crash rates versus right turns. So, we discussed all of that. So, the applicant has spent about the last two months working with the adjoining property or the property owner that they're under contract with to buy this piece of property, about purchasing additional right-of-way to make those street improvements occur. That would be extending the turn lane to provide their customers with an area to get out of the through lane on Mount Comfort Road for eastbound traffic. They've also been working with their engineering division to actually look at the design to make sure that it met requirements for just street design, that there's not too many bends in the road, those types of things, want a nice even transition through these improvements that they'd be making. Of course, the city, through CIP and bond improvement programs, improved Mount Comfort Road, just a few years ago widened to four lanes from here out through Rupel Road. So, it's a brand-new road, in our opinion, and was to handle all the construction that occurred on the west side of town. So, what the applicant is proposing tonight is to extend that turn lane. That would provide sufficient stacking for eastbound traffic entering the site, essentially make double the length of the turn lane there that currently feeds the intersection. They're still proposing the full access into their site on Mount Comfort Road. We think, as I said in our staff report, that, you know, this will help. You have a high number of vehicles that want to take a left into, into this type of use of convenience stores, high-traffic generation, probably one of the highest that you'll see in a, in the manual, and a lot of AM peak traffic. Well, they're serving the customers out to the west of them, so you're going to have a lot of the eastbound traffic. They're going to want to enter this site, and then they're going to want to exit this site and probably continue on their way, at least for AM purposes, continue to the east. And installing this turn lane, as they proposed, will help with that. You'll reduce a lot of the congestion that would be created, so you won't have people slowing down in the through lane, potential rear collisions, people swerving around a stop vehicle to just get right back in the same lane as they are. It's going to help with a lot of those issues. I think how we are looking at this is that there's still lots of issues that will exist. They're creating these left-turning movements by proposing a driveway on Mount Comfort Road, and by installing a turn lane, they're reducing the number of conflicts that they've created through this development access point. We still see that as concern, that the purpose of the access management ordinance, as it was written and as we see it, is to not have that longer trip. You want to have those high-turning movements on the side roads, on the lower traveled road in the case Shiloh Drive that carries five times fewer vehicles than Mount Comfort, Mount Comfort Road does. There's a turn lane that already exists, it does not require any improvements to a fully improved, recently improved roadway. So, vehicles that want to enter this site going eastbound in the AM, just sticking to that particular traffic movement, can still get into a turn lane without any improvements to the roadway, go on to Shiloh Drive and make that turning movement, in our opinion, and it would maintain the integrity of Mount Comfort Road. It won't introduce a higher number of left-turn movements on Mount Comfort and the congestion that we see that will occur because of it, certainly with the full access, the full access that they propose. So, we see that this is a, a good fix for turning movements that are being produced by the, by the development, but there's still lots of problems that will be created by it, and this will not solve all of those. To us, that's kind of the opposite of what the access management ordinance is trying to accomplish, which is to not allow this to occur at all, honestly. Our recommendation would be to keep this as a ride-in, ride-out. We feel that eastbound customers can easily use a turn lane, they can go right on the Shiloh Drive and pull right into the store and still have high levels of convenience. This will be the only convenience store serving this area right now, so we, we certainly see the need for it. I think the customers came out, or the citizens out in this area came out, supported the rezoning for this property, that they really wanted to see the service out there. We're really looking now at what's the best way to maintain the integrity of a road that was just recently improved. Our opinion should be a ride-in, ride-out with full access on Shiloh Drive without any improvements to the roadway, without any widening on Mount Comfort Road and redesigning the way that it was already constructed. That is our recommendation at this point. You will see that under planning commission determination, number one, for a variance from the access management standards. We're recommending the ride-in, ride-out. We've included a B, should the planning commission want to see this full access or some sort of three-quarters access, hopefully three-quarters access, which would prohibit the left turns out of the site. We see left turns out of the site being a significant problem, because you're going to have customers coming into the turn lane to turn into the site, customer or just travelers getting into the turn lane to use Mount Comfort, and then you're going to introduce a third movement, which is people turning out onto Mount Comfort and sometimes probably utilizing that turn lane to stage to queue to get into the through lane, or at minimum, they're going to be crossing those two turning movements that are going to be existing. So, we see left out as a significant problem. If the commission would like to see higher levels of access on Mount Comfort than we're recommending, so we've recommended three-quarters, would recommend to you to support only three-quarters access on Mount Comfort, and that would include all the street improvements that they've shown on their new civil plan, so that'd be extending the turn lane, requiring the right-of-way, relocating utilities, everything that's necessary to make the widening meet engineering's requirements. That would also include a variance of the master street plan cross-section. They're going to have to reduce the green space between the curb and sidewalk that currently meets code. When they widen the roadway, there's not enough room between structures that exist on other people's properties to make that happen. So, they're going to have to bring the sidewalk in closer to the street. It's only a small area for the overall property, but it is one other consideration. They will be improving the turn signal for a dedicated left-turn arrow on Mount Comfort Road, so that would really just be adding a signal head to that, and the city would go in and reconfigure the operation of that traffic signal. The turn lane on Shiloh Drive will need to be restriked regardless of whatever the approval is to allow proper turning movements. Right now, it's really only striped for southbound movements on, on Shiloh, so they would be restriping that and then standard streetlight installation. There are two variances for interior drive aisles, which is to allow wider than 24 feet directly in front of the building, and on the west side of the building, we support both of those, we stated that last time, for the fuel truck and the amount of traffic in and out of this type of business. It's expected that that would be appropriate. And in determination of commercial design standards, number three, we do fully support the proposed building. There are a few other standard conditions, but again, the major issue is the access management with the planning commission decides. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant available? Could you please state your name and tell us about your project?
I am Rob Olliver with Come and Go. I also have Nathan with CEI Engineering. Ms. Hayes is a seller, she's here as well, and so is David Urstine with CDRE, if we need some real estate expertise. So, if you don't mind, if I can't answer something, I'll probably ask for one of those guys to do it. First of all, I'd like to thank city staff. It's been 10 weeks or 11 weeks of designing this. I appreciate your time. Since the 11 weeks, 11 weeks since we talked to you last, we have been working with the seller on trying to get, trying to work out right-of-way dedication and what it would cost to put in that middle turn lane. Because if you remember correctly, last time we were here, we were talking about extending that middle turn lane so that we'd be able to get a left in into our property. So, I agree with several of the conditions that staff is recommending, minus, I would still like a full access on Mount Comfort. Why would I want a full access on Mount Comfort? Well, you know, we had talked about, it was probably going to be, well, a left turn lane, if, if you pull it back, I think it's 125 feet, it's a lot safer condition to take a left into our development. So, that's ingress. Egress, if you look at the traffic study, there's 11 during the peak hour and I think 12, 11 and 12 respectively, I believe. Plus, taking a left out of the development, I mean, I'd do that all day long, but if you're not comfortable doing that, you can always go behind our store and hit Shiloh and go to the light and take a left. So, so there's options. If, if you have a left turn lane there, a left turn out, you always have the option of not using it and going to Shiloh. So, that's, that's one thing that we disagreed with. The other thing is, we're trying to get a left into our site off Mount Comfort, and they're proposing us to put a left turn arrow at the intersection, and we don't feel that we should have to pay for that price. I'll be here for questions.
Okay. I didn't know if you had anything. Okay, yeah, if we have any questions, we'll bring you back up.
Perfect. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any member of the public here to speak to this item? Seeing no one, bring him back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I've been on the commission for quite a while and seen quite a few traffic reports come through, and it amazes me how many of them are conducted during snowstorms, during vacations, and times when, when traffic patterns aren't consistent with how they normally are. And I'm suspect of validity of, of some of these traffic and studies. And so, I just want to put that out there, that I personally am starting to feel like, you know, that, that they're, they're timed to be in the best favor of the, the, the outcome for the development. And if I'm wrong, prove me wrong, but I don't, I, I don't feel like some of these traffic studies are as valid as they could be. Are you speaking about this current one? I am.
Mr. Chair. That was a question that had come up, the timing of the traffic study, and if I could ask Mr. Street from CEI to come up. They spoke with Peters and Associates during that time, and I, I believe they modified those numbers. We didn't have them available to provide those, but if you could maybe inform the commission.
Yeah, we, the, the traffic study was requested, I believe, at the time of the Southern Division Committee hearing. Immediately after that meeting, we engaged Peters to try to turn around the traffic study, hence the timing. The, it just happened to fall that way. We didn't, we didn't plan it that way. It was just the time available that we had. After our last visit here at, at Planning Commission, Peters did address that issue and blanket added 30% volume to the traffic to account for, U of A was out on the Friday that they did traffic counts. Public schools were still in, but 30% increase or addition to the, to the traffic numbers to, to reflect that in the study and the figures.
And it was during the time when there was ice on the roads, is that correct?
It was December 20th. I don't recall if there was snow or, we've had plenty of it, so it's possible. Again, we, we didn't control it.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that it's your fault. You couldn't, you couldn't influence so many of these traffic pattern, studies.
Mr. Chair.
I could ask the applicant a question. Certainly. I didn't have a chance to review the numbers. Did the, what were the findings? What were the levels of service? Did those change dramatically? Is there anything that the commission should be aware of?
No.
I know there wasn't anything below a, probably a B or a C on the original study.
That's correct. The, in general, the, the levels of service stayed the same. The, for the peak hours, left turns out at the subject intersection, the, the levels of service did go from C to E and D.
For left turn out of the site?
Yes.
From C to what, E?
Yes.
And so, what is, what do those letters mean to just the public listening?
It's a longer delay. Level of service D and above is generally acceptable. They're all acceptable. I know on, on Weddington, for example, there's many intersections that are level of service F. It's how long you have to sit at the intersection.
We hear from our public that's acceptable. This goes from a C to an E?
In the AM peak, it's reflected as an E, and in the PM, it's a D for the southbound left turn out to Mount Comfort access.
So, this would be their customers turning out would have a very long delay turning left out of the site, correct?
Yes. And again, the, the study reflects that at these peak times, there are 12 between hours of seven and nine, 12 exiting, and, no, I'm sorry, 11 in the, in the AM and 12 in the PM.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
I just had one other comment on, on the traffic study issue is that the grade has, if I'm understanding this correctly, has to do with how long you wait for the movement that you'd like to make, and it does not reflect how safe those movements are. I, I'm, I'm very good at making very quick movements that are very dangerous. And so, just because, you know, it takes a while to make a movement, doesn't mean that if the opportunity is there to turn left, that you'll just do it. So, but, but just as far as the traffic studies go, it's, it is, the, the grades are about how long you wait, not about how safe the movements are. So, I just want to leave that there.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hoskins.
Well, my knee-jerk reaction is like, who cares how long somebody tries to come and go, but I know that's probably not a legitimate argument. The, you said that the, the peak traffic was from, in the morning, was what time to what time?
We have it seven to nine.
Seven to nine. And how many cars per hour?
We don't have a power count, but the, the total turning out projected is 11 in the AM.
So, in other words, 11 cars in two hours?
Correct.
So... So a car every less than 10 minutes? Just, just under 10 minutes, right? All right? It's got to be close. Yeah. And what about the, the PM hours?
12.
12. So that's one car every 10 minutes?
Correct.
Is that also two hours, I assume?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Can you tell me the distance from the Shiloh Drive intersection at Mount Comfort Road to the full access you're wanting on, on Mount Comfort Road? Can you tell me what that distance is?
Yeah. As measured per, per code requirements from curb to curb, it is 262 feet.
So that's more than the 250 feet of separation we require?
Correct.
Okay. What about from Mount Comfort to the, the full access entrance on, off of Shiloh?
I believe that measurement is 290.
So it's about 30 feet longer. Okay. And in the last couple of months while you've had this tabled, you've put together a plan to be able to add right-of-way to Mount Comfort Road and make improvements to extend the center turn lane?
Correct. That was included in the submittal package. I don't know if we can thumb a sheet or two down to see the overall. Yes, if you can see to the west of our proposed access, we're taking the widening to the access for the mobile home park.
And so do you know by chance how many feet you've extended that turn lane or how many feet you're going to be able to extend that turn lane?
We are adding 125 feet of actual turn lane, and there is a 100-foot taper to get back out to the roadway and then 125 feet to the end. So total, we're looking at 375, I believe, 375 feet.
And that's, that 375 is measured from Mount Comfort Road intersection to Shiloh?
No, sir. That's actually measured to the turning movement into the, to the project. We would probably extend a little bit further. We've got some stationing on there. I can't quite read it. 450 feet would be a safe estimate, close to 500.
Did you say you're taking the current access of the mobile home park with this or just extending it past that?
No, that's, that's where the taper, that's where the road widening will meet back into the existing roadway is near the mobile home access.
And let me ask you one other thing. Are you in agreement to, that there will be a shared entrance and exit, shared with the property to the west?
While with the road improvements, let me ask you another question first. The traffic study was done on December 20th?
That's when the final counts were made, yes.
Okay. And, and I believe Commissioner Winston's right. I think we had some inclement weather about then. And now Peters has added 30% to the traffic volumes?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea where that 30% came from?
I do not.
Okay.
I'm sure they have a, an educated.
Right.
Scenario in their experience.
I, I agree with you. I, I know Peters and Associates, they, they're pretty good. Okay. Well, I guess my knee jerk reaction is, is I for sure would support a three-quarter ingress, egress, especially if they're adding that much, that much turn lane to it. Still a little bit on the fence about the full access, but then again, we're only talking six cars an hour in, in the highest peak time. So I'm almost leaning full access, but I'd like to hear what the rest of the commission has to say.
Can I, can I hand you a memo I did, not regarding Mr. Come and Go, but actually their competitor, when Casey's was seeking a right-in, exit, I mean, entrance only from Weddington? Because it does quote, I do quote the Unified Billment Code and the variance provision, which says that a variance, in order to protect the ingress and egress, access rights to a street of an abutting property owner of variance to the curb cut minimum shall be granted by the planning commission to allow ingress, egress, curb cut at the safest functional location along the property. However, it goes on to say that you don't have to give a complete 100% curb cut. And in fact, when Come and Go came and, and requested a curb cut on Martin Luther King, they were granted a three-quarters curb cut, not a, not a left out. Now, I know that the traffic study only said there'd be 11 or 12 cars, about one per, every 10 minutes coming from the Come and Go location, but this is a shared curb cut. There will be, I guess, there's an existing full access curb cut where the mobile home park is, if I'm not mistaken. Is that, is that right? Is that a, that's an existing full access curb cut by the mobile home park?
It is.
I'm asking staff.
Okay.
Okay.
There you go.
So right now, there's a, a complete curb cut there. However, if we allow a complete curb cut here, there might be some, and, and this property besides the mobile home park will be developed in the future, and they're going to have access to this curb cut, then it'll be probably many more than 11 or 12 cars for a two-hour frame that would be trying to turn left. I think that they have done due diligence on the left turn in, but I do think that it would be much safer for them to drive short distance over to the Shiloh Drive if they wanted to turn left onto Mount Comfort and use that intersection. I think that the left turn out is almost always in my experience and looking at what the engineers have given us, to be the most dangerous turn, much more dangerous than left turn in, even though that's obviously more dangerous than right turns. And so I think that you are allowed, it says if a parcel of the corner of an arterial or collector street, and this is the ordinance, provides such short frontage along the major street that there's no safe ingress, egress functional location on that street, the planning commission may deny the curb cut or may limit such curb cut to ingress or egress only. Now here, it's not too short. They, they meet the curb cut minimums, but I think for safety reasons, you can still restrict the curb cut if you have a good safety reason. And I think here, we're looking at, and I'm sorry if this doesn't go straight with Come and Go's recommendations, but in this particular case, there is a good functional way to get out and turn left very close to where people would like to leave, which is going to Shiloh. And in the future, there might be a second location somewhere on Shiloh when the property develops, if property develops behind them on Shiloh, there might be another access out there. But I am concerned about the left out to make this a full access easement at this point in time, because there might be more traffic than even this traffic study has showed.
Mr. Chair.
Certainly.
I may even add on to some of city attorney's comments in your packet. We have had our professional engineering staff evaluate the turning movements and included memos in your packet on page 9 of 52. Lynn Newman evaluated this, and he's discussing that the worst turning movements are left turns in where 47% of accidents occur and 27% occur off of egress. Corey, is that, am I reading that correct on his report? So we're really more concerned with the left in as the most dangerous as far as life safety concerns?
I would think that, however, with them building the left turn lane where they can sit and wait, it makes the left turn in safer and it makes the left turn out probably more dangerous, because now they're going across more lanes to be able to turn left. So even though generally, that is the statistics nationwide when you're just looking at a street, if the street has been improved to allow you to stop and wait until it is safe, then I think that, you know, you eliminate the rear end collisions, which is why staff recommended you have, you build this additional lane, extend it out. And so I think that even though nationwide, that might be correct, I think in this particular case, when you have a light not very far up there that's going to stop traffic, you have a lane you can sit and wait until it's safe, I think that the left turn lane in is probably a lot safer than the left turn out. And I don't think our engineers have, have completely studied this one intersection. And correct me if I'm wrong, we have an engineer here. But I do think with the road improvements and with the light right up in, in front of them, I think that actually this would, the left turn in is not going to be that dangerous a movement, but I am still concerned about the left turn out going across all those lanes of traffic.
And I will chime in, because the last time that we spoke about this, the one phenomenon that gets neglected is the sun. Your peak time in, driving due east, you're looking right at the sun, and I, and I've driven that road multiple times and all the time. And every single day when I'm coming home, I round the curve, put my visor down, because I'm looking right at the sun, driving into that intersection around that curve. And that's the biggest concern that I have about this whole proposal is safety. The three-quarter, you know, I, I don't think I'd have a problem with the three-quarter access. Left out, there's no way. It, it would just terrify me to think that, you know, with the traffic study that we have, and if we're saying five or six cars an hour, is it really worth taking that risk just to put an access availability just to maybe get five cars out onto that street as opposed to coming back over to Shiloh or to?
To Shiloh.
Yeah. To Shiloh just to get where they're needing to go. I mean, you're talking, putting one extra car at that light every 10 minutes going, coming off of Shiloh, which to me is much more reasonable than trying to get a full access and crossing traffic and, and creating just a terrible hazard. So with that, I'll take other comments, I believe Commissioner Autry at the floor next.
And I'm glad you brought up the deal about the sun, because that is a, a major issue ahead of east in the morning. Now, the Arkansas Highway Transportation Department did in 2012, there was a study, 15,000 cars or vehicle trips per day. We've just approved tonight a automobile dealership right down Shiloh. That's going to be an impact of traffic going both north and south. We're also going to, I think there's a proposed development to widen Rupel Road. It's going to be another huge influx of eastbound and westbound traffic. I think the, and I think you've been short-changed by the numbers of turn-ins of 11 in the AM and 12 at the PM. Although this may be 15,000 cars on Mount Comfort, your college store, I know that probably is double the traffic amount, but I was, I go by there constantly today. Every pump was full and you were having turn-ins right and left. And, and I think you're going to double, triple the amount of this 11 and 12 thing, but that's due to the success of your store. And I wish that we could make this happen, but the left ends, left outs, it, it just cannot happen with this particular location. And with those things, the accident potential and, and the increased traffic coming both from Rupel Road when it's developed, the automobile dealership to your north, and then just the regular traffic patterns that's there today, it's going to be tough, because you're, I mean, you have a very successful model, but that's one of the things that's kind of going against you unfortunately. So I can't really support it. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Chester.
Mr. Chair, I had a question for the city attorney and for engineering. For city attorney, when I read this, it says the planning commission may deny the curb cut or may limit such curb cut to ingress or egress only. But it seems to me that you're saying we could limit it to any, any combination of those things. Am I misreading the letter of the law there?
No, I, I think it really gives you that, that right.
Okay. It doesn't, it doesn't say you can either do in or.
Any kind of quarter, from right in only.
Okay.
Right in, right out to left in only, or whatever you want to do, I think. Whatever makes sense from a safety point of view. Normally, the default is to give a full access.
Right.
If you, if it is unsafe, very unsafe to give a full access, then you can reduce it to make it as safe as you can.
Okay. And then turning to you for your expertise on that, thank you. I'm, now I'm going to shy away from you and ask for expertise from engineering on a, on an opinion that the city attorney made, which was about, I tend to actually, what he said sounded reasonable, that maybe the left turn in would turn out to be more safe in this location, but I'd like to hear an expert's opinion on that. Can you opine on, and specifically, I'm asking you about your graphic on page, I believe it was not, it is 9 of 52. Compare that, which is, I'm reading to say 47% of traffic accidents occur from a left end, 27 from left out, 16 from right in and 10% from right out. Can you tell me about your opinion of the city attorney's opinion based on the improvements that may be here? And I know that you're not necess, this isn't necessarily your.
Sure. I, I completely agree with, in this instance, the city attorney's position, because, I mean, you know, that is kind of an average that's been taken for that figure over all sorts of road types.
Okay.
It's not just a five lane, you know, the dedicated turn lane right before a signal. And we all know from experience, turning left onto Weddington in front of Harps and things like that, that is definitely a much more dangerous turning movement. And to, to the city attorney's point also, sure, when that red light, you know, stops that traffic.
There'll be a pulse.
Yeah, you've got that great turn in.
Okay. So you're, you're of the opinion that a left in would be safer than the left out here?
I am of that opinion.
Okay. Now, how safe do you think the left in would be? Safe enough to allow it?
I think it's nowhere near as safe as a protected left 300 feet down at a light, which we already have wiring and infrastructure. All you have to do is slap a head up there and then re, reconfigure the signal.
So engineering's official preference still would be right in, right out only? I'm back to the same place I seem to be with you guys every time, which is that I really like your stores and you're, you seem to be a, suffering from your own success here because you've got too much traffic. I still will tend to believe that your popularity will bring traffic in even if it's slightly hampered by a right in and right out. And so I'm going to tend to lean towards even what, a little further away than some of my fellow commissioners and lean towards staff's opinion, that since there are three entrances to the project, albeit a couple of them maybe, no, two? I must be misreading the plan. I'm sorry. In any event, a full entrance on Shiloh, correct? I'm going to have to tend to lean with staff on this and lean towards right in, right out, even though I feel like the city attorney makes a fairly decent argument, I'm going to lean towards engineering's preference for, you know, I know we can't have, the safest thing wouldn't be to not have cars at all. Obviously, we're not going there. But I kind of feel like I'm going to lean towards the engineering's opinion on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ossens.
Listening to my fellow commissioners, I'm now off the fence. The, I'll support a three-quarter access. I think if they're willing to, to pay for and extend that center turn lane, the distance that they're willing to, willing, the distance that they're willing to extend it, I believe people sitting in that turn lane to turn left to go into Come and Go, I don't, I don't see that as, as a really big issue. And of course, we can't put traffic lights at every single intersection in town. So, so while, while in a perfect world, every single intersection would be signalized and they'd all be timed perfectly, it's not, not realistic. So I did want to move on to something else, though, that the applicant brought up that I'm a little bit fuzzy about, and this was payment of left turn or striping or something. That went right past me. Can you expand on that, please?
Just to read the recommendation, so it's clear. Yeah, the applicant did bring up an issue on one of the improvements we were recommending. So should the planning commission allow greater access and right in, right out beyond the turn lane discussion that we've had? The improvements would include some stripe changes to the center turn lane on Shiloh Drive, which currently, if you're southbound on Shiloh coming to Mount Comfort, you get to utilize almost the entire center turn lane. It's southbound dedicated. And this would show some changes to allow northbound use of that. So their customers that come on to Shiloh Drive will be able to get into that turn lane out of the through lane traffic and turn left into the site. That's the Shiloh turn lane. They would just modify the striping.
Okay.
That's really all that. And then on the signal, and as Corey just mentioned, the signal on Mount Comfort, if you're eastbound and want to use the turn lane to turn left on the Shiloh to access the store, there is a, not a dedicated.
store, there is a, not a dedicated arrow, so you're just on an open green, so you're not protected, you don't get to that protected left turn. It's already wired for a signal head to be put there, but there's not one there. Our recommendation is that they would install that signal head, where they pay for the cost of materials and labor, the city favors, the station division would sell the signal.
For a protected left from Mount Comfort?
Onto Shiloh.
On the Shiloh, okay.
And that, that condition is the one that the applicant had an issue with.
Okay. Corey? Is it, you want to speak, speak to that as far as?
I thought you called me Corey.
Oh, well, I did, I thought that's what you said.
It's Rob.
That's what?
Corey, are you?
Okay.
I thought you were pointing at him. Are you an engineer?
I thought that was Rob. Okay.
Yeah.
Now that we know who everybody is, talk to me about that, the left adding the?
Yeah, I mean, so we're trying to get a full access, and, and it sounds like that we probably won't get a full access?
Probably not.
I just don't think that we should be responsible for the turn arrow on the intersection. There's already, what, thirty-three hundred vehicles a day there? I don't think that we would be, our development would not add very much more than that.
Okay.
You look at the traffic count, so I don't feel like it's our responsibility to do it, and I don't even know the price, and, you know, we've added those before, and they've gone up to?
Okay.
Eighty thousand dollars. Or a leg, so.
Um, staff, Jess, I'm, and, you know, it's part of me, I'm having a tough time squaring that in my head, too, as far as the amount of traffic that Come and Go is going to put on that signal, especially when, now there's no left out, or what have you, I'm trying to, trying to get my hands around that as well.
Yeah, our recommendation was, I think there's going to be some vehicles that are going to use that signal, some are going to miss that turn, I, they're going to have an impact on that left turn, it doesn't have a protected signal installed. I'm not sure what the cost is, and I don't know if, if engineering has looked at a, a cost, or if CEI knows a, a cost of a left turn signal head. Again, it's simply the materials for that one signal head, it's not for the entire arm, it's not for major improvements, it's simply the signal head that we would take and install on that arm.
Go ahead.
You got the answer? It's hard to know, you know, what the cost implications may be, not knowing what existing equipment is out there. I would be a little hesitant to agree to it, you know, point blank, without having some more information. I'd also like to point out that existing at that signal, as it is today with unprotected left turning movements, there's more than three hundred turns just during the peak hours. If we, if we didn't have this Come and Go access, and we had to go up Shiloh, we may add seventy left turns to that in the peak hours, but existing as it is now, there's, there's already more than three hundred.
Yeah, I'm, Mr. Chair, I'm kind of on, on the side of Come and Go on this one, sorry, Jess. I, I'd have a tough time squaring the expense of that, whether it's five dollars or fifty thousand dollars. I think your term is rational nexus or something.
Well, that's not my term, that's Supreme, Supreme Court's term, that you can only require the rough proportionality, the impact of their development upon the infrastructure needs of the city. And if the city's needs are already far greater than any impact they might have, constitutionally, it's very suspect to try to get them to pay for it.
Well, that is a concern that I had, is how we start trying to picket applicants to?
Well, that was, that was really the, the, the access, and then the cost of the, adding the protected left signal head or whatever, that's, that was really all the, the hair on this one, isn't it?
I, I will say that the requirement, if you're making one for them to do a left turn lane as they have proposed, would meet the constitutional test, in my opinion.
Sure.
They are creating the need for that, to have a left turn in, where the traffic signal, they're not creating the need, but that they are for the left turn in, so I think that would be legitimate.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Let, if you're ready, fire away.
A motion to approve large scale development thirteen dash forty-five sixty-eight for Come and Go, with staff's recommendations of approval, but allowing for a three quarter access on Mount Comfort Road, provided the applicant installs the improvements per the requirements of the City Engineering Department as presented tonight, and that, that they not be responsible for installing the protected left signal head at, at Mount Comfort and Shiloh. And?
But they are required to do the additional turning lane, right?
As, as what's presented tonight, and working with the City Engineering.
Can you be more clear about what the egress is on that? Is that left?
Three quarter access, that's, that's right in, right out, and left in eastbound on, from Mount Comfort Road. No, no left outs from Come and Go onto Mount Comfort Road.
And then also, Commissioner Hoskins, condition two is a variance for the two internal driveway width increases, and then condition three is a determination of design standards.
And you're in favor of the variance?
Yeah, and I include that as well.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Chair, can I make a real quick comment?
Certainly.
I, I agree with Commissioner Hoskins on the, the traffic head and the applicant, I don't think that they should be responsible for that. I suspect that it will be symbolic only, but I think I'm going to stick with my agreement with engineering and vote no, but I don't think that's going to make a difference. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Hoskins, and a second from Commissioner Autry. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
No.
Honcho?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunche?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. And the last item of old business is an administrative item, ADM, let's see, fourteen dash forty-six thirty-five for UDC Amendment, Chapter one sixty-six point two-one Downtown Design Overlay District Standards. And Mr. Garner, could you give us the staff report, please?
Yes, sir. We discussed this at our last Planning Commission meeting, so I won't give a full staff report. I will just give a summary of the changes that we've made since the previous Planning Commission meeting. There was some feedback from the commissioners about to clarify the definition of porch, and we have added that, some language to try to clarify that a little bit further. We've also changed the applicability section of the code to make it clear that you can do ordinary repairs and maintenance in the downtown design overlay district, and these are not subject to the code. We've also added aluminum zinc coated steel as a permitted finish material. One of the commissioners mentioned using a product called gabalume, which is very common in metal roofing. And then we've modified the fence requirements to address comments from one of the commissioners that privacy fence be at least ten feet behind the principal facade of a structure when it's at the street. There was quite a bit of discussion as well about entries, and there's a very specific requirement, if somebody chooses to build a stoop in the downtown area, and we haven't changed our proposal on that, we, I did have some discussion in your staff report, so I won't really read that, I just want to make the one, one point, that you are not required to develop a stoop when you're doing a residential or commercial development downtown. That's just one of many, and we just felt like it is, it is a, we should have some sort of minimum requirement when you do that particular type of development. And with that, I will just open it up for discussion. Thanks.
Okay. Was there, excuse me, any member of the public here speak to this item? Okay. Bring it back to the commission, and I, and I'm going to just jump off first. I, I'm totally fine with everything that was revised and highlighted and struck out. I think staff has done an excellent job with everything that they've done on this, the clarification is there throughout, and I think it reads exactly as it should, from a technical standpoint, for some non-late person, as myself, I understood it completely. So, with that, I'll pass it on to the other commissioners. Commissioner Autry?
I concur with you completely, I, I feel much relieved to have the definition of the porch and a stoop, it's been bothering me since the last meeting, and I fully support your efforts, y'all did, you did a real good job.
And I concur.
Stoop over all week.
Stoop. Stoop. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Hoskins?
I'd like to make a motion.
Certainly.
Uh, that we, do we approve this, or?
Forward.
Or forward with the, okay, yeah. I'd like to make a motion to forward ADM fourteen dash forty-six thirty-five to full city council with, as recommended by staff.
Second.
Do it work?
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Hoskins, and a second from Commissioner Chesser. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Honcho?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunche?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and the last item that we have this evening is the election of the Planning Commissioner officers for this as two thousand and fourteen. And I guess we'll pass out?
No tie votes.
Pass out the ballots.
Got the ballots to pass out, fill out your ballots.
Do you have any pins, do you have any pins to pass out with them? We, we went paperless and penless not long ago.
You need a pen?
Yes, please. I didn't have one either.
I have a pencil, you can use it.
I borrowed Jeffy's.
We're papered and pened down here.
Don't take that long.
Can I peek? And the winner is? This is slightly, this is slightly.
Okay, we have kind of a split vote on a couple of these, so I think we probably need to do another follow-up. We have, looks like for Chair, we have three votes for Chesser, three for Hoskins. For Vice Chair, we have several different, we have several votes, three votes for Autry. Let's see here. So, it looks like Autry has the majority for Vice Chair, looks like Chair is, is between three for Commissioner Chesser, three for Hoskins, then Secretary, it looks like Ryan Noble had the majority, so we probably need to re-vote for Chair between Hoskins and Chesser, and I think we have three and three, I'm not sure if we need to?
I think maybe what we just need to do is table that vote till the next meeting, when we have more people at the, at the Planning Commission.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. And I guess with that, I?
But, but the other two positions are elected.
Yep, so we have Commissioner Autry for Vice Chair, and Commissioner Noble for Secretary.
Okay, and was there any, any announcements of?
We did want to announce, we have our new commissioner in the audience.
Oh, okay.
And she will be replacing Blake Pennington, Janet Selby.
Correct.
So, anyway, say hi to her on your way out.
Okay.
And we'll have Commissioner Honcho, I guess we'll chair this next meeting as well, until we get the?
Oh, okay. I thought this was my swan song, but no, it's not, okay. Okay. Thank you, word, John.